We're proud to present a special recognition and resolution honoring a man who has dedicated 50 years of service to the borough of Pottstown, Mr. Douglas M. Jürger. Throughout his long and distinguished career, Doug has been a cornerstone of this community's growth and success, particularly in his role as Director of Public Works, where his leadership and dedication have made a lasting impact. With that, on behalf of Borough Leadership, we would like to present you with the following resolution. Whereas Douglas M. Jürger has faithfully served the borough of Pottstown as a dedicated employee since 1974, and whereas throughout his remarkable career, he has held the positions of Assistant Electrician, Borough Electrician, and Director of Public Works, consistently demonstrating a strong work ethic professionalism, and whereas for the past 35 years, Mr. Jürger has served as Director of Public Works, during which time he has not only overseen the borough's infrastructure with skill and dedication, but also assisted numerous residents, external entities, elected officials, and internal departments with the highest level of customer service and support. And whereas Mr. Jürger's in-depth knowledge of Pottstown infrastructure, both past and present, has been a value asset to the borough, and whereas Mr. Jürger's natural curiosity and passion for learning have driven him to stay consistently up-to-date with emerging trends and technological advancements, ensuring that the borough remains not only efficient with its operations, but also forward-thinking in its approach to future challenges, and whereas Mr. Jürger has consistently been a staunch defender of the borough's best interests, always advocating for its long-term vitality and sustainability, ensuring that decisions made today contribute to a prosperous and resilient future for generations to come, and whereas he has tirelessly made himself available day and night to respond to emergencies across various departments, demonstrating his unwavering dedication to the safety and well-being of the community, often going above and beyond the call of duty. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Mayor and Town Council of the borough of Pottstown officially recognize Douglas M. Jürger for his exceptional service and commitment to the borough, having dedicated 50 years to its success and growth, and furthermore, he has extended our deepest appreciation for his continued dedication and extraordinary contributions. Doug, congratulations. All right, that was a long one, but I had many years to cover. But in addition to this heartfelt recognition from the borough, we also want to acknowledge and thank Congresswoman Madeline Dean and State Senator Tracy Pennekook, as well as County Commissioner Tom Taballo. Unfortunately, they all had other engagements tonight, and they could not be here, but they provided citations here on the table for you, Doug, from their respective parties. We're also honored tonight to have State Representative Joe Cerisi, who will also present a citation from the Pennsylvania House of Representatives. Representative, come forward.
Just wondering how important you are to have to be back in Harrisburg at 9:00 tomorrow morning, so I came home for you. But I'm thrilled to be here, and I'm thrilled to be able to do this. I'm going to tell you a quick story before I get to the citation. Two years ago, we did the tunnel wall, three years ago?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, the brilliant idea we had was to walk the four tunnels, we only went to one, throughout the arches throughout Pottstown, and, you know, I'm really, this is really live, I'll stand back, it's like being on the stage, I think I'm about to sing. I'm really very brave when it comes to that stuff. So I knew from the start, I was in trouble when he told me I had to walk down a manhole, down the ladder, I said, "That crap isn't happening." So we went and found a covert that we could walk into.
Walk right into.
Walk into. The next thing that got me was the guy who stayed out of the tunnel. I said, "Why is he staying out?" They said, "If there's a problem where you don't come out, we have to have somebody that knows how long you've been in there." That was strike two. Coming down through the tunnel. The third and final strike was while we were deep in, or maybe what we were, 100 feet in, for me it was like four miles, and a snake went by.
Uh-oh.
And Pam Hacker was with me, and I almost jumped in Pam's arms. And Doug goes, "You want to go?" "No, it's time to go, I've seen enough." So, I want to thank you, because we could laugh about it, but going down there, you really showed me what was underneath this town, and none of you have gone, I think you all should go, I thought we were the Phantom of the Opera for a while. But to look at the magnitude of work that you do, that was one little bit of the work that you do, and being the representative here for six years and seeing the stuff that you do, I'm very honored to be able to know you and know the work you did. Now, my staff thought they'd be funny and put some facts and figures together for when you first started to work, so I think gas was like 17 cents a gallon, Milton Sharp was governor, and they weren't sure if it was Ford or Nixon that was president, John Armato was 60, and I was four. So, that one is true, John wasn't, but that one is true. But on behalf of the House of Representatives, the members of the House, I'm not going to read what he did, the whereas, the whereas, you can read that at home when you're watching TV. But we are honored to say, and we don't get to do this often, to honor someone for 50 years of dedication and work to a community, and for everything you've done, I'm honored to be able to give you this on behalf of the 203 members and the Governor of Pennsylvania. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We look forward to doing this when you're 100. Those little facts that I get.
Yeah, they're good.
There you go, you keep that.
All right, so, just in closing, Doug, you know, your work has really touched every corner of this borough, and tonight we take this opportunity to publicly thank you. I want to personally thank you and recognize your incredible contributions. And on behalf of the Borough Council, Mayor, and all who have benefited from your services, we offer our deepest appreciation and best wishes as you continue forward with us. You've truly made Pottstown a better place for all of us. Thank you.
We're going to have to go down the line now.
Okay, we have his report, nothing to add. Infrastructure, Councilor Lubininski.
All reports in your pack.
Okay. Transportation, Councilor Proscal.
Actually, we did meet, we went over some of the airport projects, and actually, one thing I thought was, you know, interesting, that the BOA announced in February that the bipartisan infrastructure law projects will not require local share, so it'll be, 90% will be federal and 10% will be state, so that's a good deal for us.
Okay, good. And while I have your ordinance review? Nothing. Economic Development and Business Liaison, Ms. Lee Clark.
So, indulge me for a minute, good evening, councilors, Madam Mayor. I know it's not Halloween yet, so we just have to think, though, ahead, so Santa Saturday and tree lighting for December 7th, 2024, and so we are going to be having another full day of fun. If we ever get any rain again, the river will rise enough that they can actually bring the dragon boat again. So, we absolutely look forward to that every year, as Santa does arrive on the river. And then, we are, this year, there will be a new element, which is an Arts Fest at Riverfront Park, which is really great, it just expands year after year. We were going to have a scavenger hunt and steps challenge in downtown, and that will have something to do with Annie, because that is the play at Steel River during the holiday season, and the Holiday Planner Competition and Caroling. The competition, of course, you have to plan your planners out now, because you'll want to get them in so that you are part of the judging panel, and you get bragging rights. That's the big, that's the big thing you get from that. And then the Annual Tree Lighting, which is always a great event, where the Pottstown School District sends students and their choir director and sings carols, will have cookies and cocoa, and it's just always a great community event. One thing that we do have to do is, there are things that have to be paid for, like the scavenger hunt and some of the gift certificates, so paid really covers the staff time, but we do need sponsors, and there are sponsorship opportunities, please look at social media, what those sponsorship opportunities are, and if you are so inclined, we would really appreciate that support. And this year, as things become more complicated as far as logistics, we are going to be looking for volunteers for the day as well. Just certain hours of the day, you don't have to commit for the whole time, but we hope that you will join us, and this seems like an appropriate time, especially now that we have even more retail operations in the downtown and just outside of the downtown. Please remember, shop small is not one day a year, it is every day, so shop local. And if you don't know what to buy, you can get your downtown dollars, which is the former Yifty gift card, which is the perfect gift, because you don't have to know somebody's size. So that's my economic development report for this one.
And for the land bank?
Land Bank did not have a quorum, so I have nothing to report.
Okay.
So now I am finished.
Thank you. Human Resources, Ms. Lubin.
Good evening, councilors, Council President, Madam Mayor. National Hispanic Heritage Month continues until October 15th, and October is also recognized as Italian-American Heritage and Culture Month, National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, National Disability Employment Month, National Bullying Prevention Month, and the LGBTQ History Month. Black History Month is in February, and actually, the Human Relations Commission would like residents in 500 words or less to nominate a black person with history in Pottstown that they should, that they feel should be recognized during Black History Month in February 2025. You can email HRC@Pottstown.org your nomination, and nominations will be accepted until November 30th, 2024. The October Commission meeting was held last evening because of logistics with the holiday, we usually have it the second, we're usually the second Tuesday of the month, but we had it the first Tuesday because of the holiday. And then our November meeting, that's going to be held on Tuesday, November 19th, at 6:00 PM in Council Chambers, and all are welcome to attend.
Very good, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and I'm Angela Brown, I am the new Executive Director at Pottstown Regional Public Library, and I've been there just shy of three months. So it's been fun, and I'm learning a lot. I just wanted to highlight on my report, which I think I gave you guys my copy, so we have a lot of new staff. We are going to be recognizing this month, one of our staff members, Erin McNichols, for 10 years of service, she is our longest working employee at the library. We also have two new Assistant Directors, one is Erin McNichols, the other is Katie Gladback, and we also hired a new Head of Youth Services, which is Angelique Masser. And so, yeah, so we have a lot of new staff, most of our staff are under five years of employment, and so we have a young group, and we are struggling and working hard to get through this time of change, we have a lot of flux going on. But we do have a lot of great things that are going on that I want to highlight. First of all, we were recognized at the Pennsylvania Library Conference, which was just this past week. Megan Beeler, our Adult Programming Coordinator, was recognized for her Beginner Sign Language program, she received a plaque and some certificates for the great job that she did. She also, which I found out this week, she was also recognized in the Pennsylvania Libraries' Governor Advisory Council on Library Development Report to the Governor. We were highlighted, Pottstown Regional Library was highlighted on Page 7, and so it was really nice to see that on a state level, we're being recognized as, for all our programs. We also were in the, get this up here, right? The newspaper, local newspaper, and for health, our, it's a health literacy programs that we have, we have yoga coming up, we also have some meditation classes and other things related to health literacy this month. And I passed out my report, so I'm going to let you guys read that, but if you have any questions, please contact me at the library, I'm usually there until 5:00.
Okay, thank you. Rickett Center, the reports included. Pottstown School District, Council Lindsey, anything?
I'm going to do my report on Tuesday. Can I take, can I put it on Tuesdays?
Okay.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Tuesday. Solicitors General Discussion, Mr. Garner, have you anything for us?
I do, good evening, everyone, and before I get into my report, I just wanted to give a shout-out to Doug Jürger and congratulate him on the 50 years with the borough. Doug, I thought I was an old guy here, but I think you have to be a couple of years, so congratulations. This evening, I thought it'd be appropriate to talk about the budget process, just as a quick refresher, since you guys are going to hear the preliminary budget presentation tonight. In this case, the borough code is actually very clear when it comes to what is required of council to pass a budget for the next year. Obviously, you need to pass the budget by December 31st of this year, you have to start the preparation of the budget at least 30 days prior to its adoption, the presentation tonight obviously satisfies that requirement. Moving forward, and you guys know this from past experience, there will be additional information you'll receive in November and December, all of which the budget will be finalized. Typically, in November, you'll make a motion to advertise that the budget is available for public inspection, has to be done 10 days prior to your vote. We put the budget online, the budget is provided to various sources, to Vaillant Borough Hall, so all those things are required before you actually vote on the budget. Would remind council that typically, at its meeting in December, you'll have two votes, one is a vote by motion to approve the budget for 2025, and obviously, the most important thing is how you fund the budget, and that requires a 2025 real estate tax ordinance, which has to be advertised and voted upon at a public meeting. So typically, if you recall, we would be doing those things at our regular meeting in December, and in times in the past, we've had special meetings to adopt the budget, even later, hopefully, that won't need to be done this year. Happy to answer any questions you guys have regarding the budget process, I think all of you have been through it a number of times, but it never hurts just to go over it again and explain why we do what we do.
Very good, any questions?
No, but thank you, go ahead.
All right, go ahead. I was just going to say, if anybody wants a live update on Hurricane Milton, I'm happy to give it to you.
Are you all right?
It's bearing down on us, it's going to make landfall at about 45 minutes, just south of Tampa, and the eye of the hurricane is scheduled to cross over us about 6:00 in the morning, so it should be, should be an interesting night.
Kenya, let us know tomorrow that you're okay.
Absolutely, I'll let everybody know, we're all ready down here, we have, you know, in case we lose power, we have extra water, and everybody's pretty well-prepared, so it'll be quite.
Take pictures if you can.
I will, definitely, and, well, hopefully, of beautiful pictures of the eye of the storm.
Okay.
Let me see, good luck, Chuck.
Thank you for your explanation of the budget, though. Yeah.
Yep. You have questions, let me know, but I think it's really pretty straightforward, and the statute's clear for a change.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck, talk to you tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
All right, Madam Mayor, your report.
Yes, good evening, it was a pretty busy month, I got to do a lot of really cool things around town, which I haven't done before, I met with the Headmaster, Dr. David Martin, at Pine Forge Academy. If you haven't been to Pine Forge Academy, it is fantastic, it is like this little hidden gem, there is like fascinating history with that land, you can see parts of the Underground Railroad, and let me tell you, those kids are so, so talented. If you want to see them, go on their YouTube channel, I was blown away, they did a concert for me, they, like, I just met everybody, it was so nice, I didn't want to leave, so I want to say thank you to them. We also had our Edgewood Cemetery cleanup, I want to thank all the volunteers, partners, the Fenster Mocker's, and Andrew Minostra, I think we did a pretty good job cleaning up everything. Oh, it was Week Without Driving last week, and I shared more about it on a video on Facebook, it was the second annual event through America Walks, and so I think this was a little bit of a pilot for me, next time, next year, we're going to do it up a little bit more. So I participated for two days in the Week Without Driving, it's to highlight the barriers that about a third of our population faces, that doesn't have a car with transportation, if they're disabled, elderly, and it highlights basically the inadequacies of sidewalks, and issues with connectivity and dangerous roads. So I work in West Conshohocken, and I planned out that I was going to take public transportation and just the bus to Norristown, I just want to make this clear, 58 stops, then the train from Norristown to Conshohocken is like 60 stops. Somehow, I was supposed to arrive in an hour and a half. Thankfully, I got a text from my partner saying, "We have to be in Philadelphia at 10 a.m., forget the bus, I'm coming to pick you up." So I didn't drive, but I just want to say, like, what an, like, amazing experience to go through that, like, I lived right across the street from Wawa, and I was late, and normally I would just drive over to get a cup of coffee, but I couldn't, so, you know, you had to just kind of make do and carry what you could on your back, and so I definitely wasn't bringing my suitcase, my briefcase, anywhere with me, but it was a pretty awesome experience. Um, let's see, oh, Cheese Toberfest, I got the honor of judging with Joe Cerisi, who I guess left already, and Scott Bentley, and I want to congratulate Cobra Kai, who are the winners, that was a fantastic fundraiser for track, this year they had it at Sunnybrook, and it was outside, it was very cool, and a lot of people, they sold out to the point that the judges didn't get to taste all the tent, because they had enough patrons, so that was fantastic. We did a tent city cleanup, I also took a very thorough tour of the Penn Foundation in Sellersville, they are partnered with St. Luke's Hospital, it is a fantastic facility that deals with co-occurrence of mental health and substance abuse, they have all different programs, and the director is working with us and actually has helped us by taking seven or so of our unhoused to their facilities, to get them treatment, and I'm happy to say, he took one woman who was pregnant, and she gave birth to a healthy baby girl at Einstein Hospital. Potstown Cluster had their fundraiser at Rivet, it was fantastic, the food was amazing. Rotary had their golf fundraiser, and I sponsored a hole on behalf of the borough. TC Foods had their ribbon cutting, that's right by Landis, go try their food, it is so good, it's right by Landis, by Optima Nails, and just fantastic, fantastic family. I met with Commissioner Taballo, met with County HHS. I finished, I think, the final draft of the comprehensive plan. I went to my first football game, I know, I'm sorry, but I don't have kids, so, Pottstown versus Pottsgrove. I would like to see a little more, like, cheering from Pottstown, there was very little particip, like, attendance at the game, but I would like to say that despite Pottstown's challenges with a lot of their seniors graduating, and they have a lot of freshmen, they did good, but they need some cheering.
Yeah, give me a pom-pom, I've got you.
All right, cool. I also did the Will Clinic at Tri-County to assist seniors with drafting their wills and powers of attorney. Oh, that was what I did, okay, sorry. Before I forget, Halloween, which is always on October 31st, we are trick-or-treating on October 31st from the hours of 5:30 to 8:00, so be prepared for people to knock on your door, and please be safe, bring flashlights. This coming Friday is the, I believe, the last Farmer's Market at Sunnybrook, and I think it's 4:00 to 7:00. Tomorrow, I'm speaking at Tri-County Leadership, and let's see, oh, like, a lot of people are representing Pottstown in Philadelphia in the next two weeks for the IMPACT Conference, I am honored to be one of those individuals, so I'm really excited about that three-day conference to learn all about equitable transportation. I want to thank Howard Brown from the Pottstown Area Health and Wellness Foundation for really being the leader of this. On October 26th, Trailers for Tomorrow is having their Harvest Festival at the Walnut Street Community Garden from 1:00 to 6:00. Hobart's Run on 10/27 is having their ride for, or not their ride for, sorry, Run for the River, it's a 5K, they need participants, you don't have to run, you can walk it, you can dress up if you like, they just need you to sign up, and you can preregister by October 11th, and that's from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. The Library is having their Halloween Safety Magic Show at 6:30 on October 22nd. Steel River Playhouse is having their gala at Brookside Country Club at 6:00 p.m. on the 19th of October. On the 19th of October, Edgewood Cemetery is also doing their walking tour, the infamous of Edgewood, from 12:00 to 2:00, tickets are $20 for adults, $10 for students, please go if you haven't gone before, it's pretty fantastic, and they put a lot of work into it, so you will really enjoy that. Also, 10, sorry, October 21st through October 22nd, sorry, scratch that, October 21st through October 26th, sorry, is a Week Without Violence for the YWCA. On the 24th and 25th, they're going to be restoring the Black Lives Matter street art and... Street Art mural from between ten to four. Um, that's a really cool time. I did it the first year, so if you haven't, um, put your hands in that paint and, uh, mural. I suggest you try it. Um, and then on the twenty-sixth is their block event from eleven to three. And, ah, um, Red Horse is having their Designer Bag Bingo on November sixteenth. So save the date. Doors open at five-thirty. Bingo starts at six-fifteen. And it's BYOB and BYOF for food. And there's going to have to be fifty-fifty and coach travel sets, et cetera. So please go on their website. And I think that's it.
Very good. And from the manager's office?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, so first, I'm going to do an update on the lead line, um, homeowner identification initiative that we have just launched on the Borough of Pottstown's, uh, website. Uh, so, Zach, we'll pull that up in a minute, but let me just kind of give you an introduction. Um, we've mentioned it in previous meetings, but we now have a, uh, online checklist for users to self-identify, uh, lead lines in, in the borough. Um, so the, you gotta be kidding me. So the process is basically through, um, a one-point-two-million project that's funded through state grants. We've identified two hundred lead service lines and replaced one hundred last year, uh, through a grant. This year, work is currently underway with investigations identifying over five-hundred-and-fifty lead service lines and a hundred-and-fifty already replaced, um, this year through the two-point-three-million-dollar project funded by Montgomery County. Um, the Borough is committed to continuing this effort over the next ten years and obtaining grants to replace the deficient lines. And we're asking for residents' help in identifying lead lines in their neighborhood, um, which will help to assist us in prioritizing areas for lead replacement, um, in, uh, future projects. So, uh, we might have to show this to you at the next meeting because we're having some technical difficulties. It was up today. We did, we were on it and used it, and we've gotten, um, requests through it already. Um, but, uh, there is a link on the news page, uh, of our website where you can then go in, um, and open up a quick, um, really tutorial. Basically, it shows you where to identify, uh, the water line coming into your house by locating the curb stop, which is the, usually a metal, uh, cover in the sidewalk. Um, and you draw a line that is straight into your house, um, perpendicular to the wall. And then you want to look in a basement or a crawl space, or if you don't have a basement or a crawl space, underneath your sink, um, to find where your water, uh, line is coming in. Once you've identified where the water line is coming in, uh, there's a, there's a couple steps that you'll, uh, need to take. You'll need a magnet, and you'll need a penny. Um, a magnet will stick to a galvanized line. So if the magnet is sticking and you have a silver metal line coming in, that will be galvanized. If the magnet does not stick, and it's either like a, a black or a blue color, that would indicate a plastic line. Um, if the magnet does not stick and it's a metal pipe coming in, you've got, probably got a lead line. Um, so those are the things that we're walking people through in this tutorial. Um, we, we are asking them to, um, submit a brief, uh, questionnaire with their address, what they've identified as, and then once they identify it, we will then come out and verify, um, just to make sure, um, to double-check. So, um, it is working, actually. Um, there's something, I think, with this specific computer, but we have it up on our computers, so, um, it is working. And we can share that to you at a, at an upcoming meeting.
Justin, what percentage lead is it? Because I don't think lead's magnetic.
That's what I said. Yeah. That is not magnetic.
Okay, I did.
Yeah. So if it's, if it's not magnetic, it'll either be lead or plastic. Plastic, you're going to see by the color and the material that you, that you feel. Um, if it's a little, um, you can't tell what the color is, uh, scratch a little bit with a penny, and if it's silver and it's non-magnetic, it's more likely a lead.
Okay, thanks.
But worst-case scenario, if you think you have lead, um, report it to us, and then we'll come out and verify. Once we get, um, a list of these throughout the borough, it will help us to identify hotspot areas or areas that we want to prioritize in our next lead replacement project. Moving on to other projects that we have going on, the Stormwater Project, um, as part of the Borough's ongoing, uh, efforts to mitigate roadway degradation caused by sump pumps. Uh, pipe and inlet work has been, uh, successfully completed on Gray Street, uh, in the north section of the town. Um, and the roadway has been milled in preparation for the, the paving, which is expected to occur in the next, uh, couple of weeks. So that project has now progressed to North Franklin Street, where we are addressing another significant sump pump drainage issue by install, installing additional inlets. And speaking of paving, as part of the Borough's ongoing efforts to, um, uh, complete paving throughout the borough, uh, we have paving completed on College Drive as of this week. Um, and then, uh, also currently, uh, undergoing paving is Shoemaker Road. Most of the other roads on our paving list, uh, have been, uh, milled at this point, and you can expect those to be paved, uh, in two to three weeks, um, weather permitting. And we certainly appreciate everybody's patience as we, uh, work to enhance the community's roadway, uh, infrastructure. Next one, uh, that we have for you on the display is a new, um, interactive map for regional recreation resources. And, um, this map can be found on park.net. It was developed through the Pottstown Area Regional Recreation Program, um, using grant funds that were secured by the Park Planner, uh, Tricia McCloskey. So basically, the map is a useful tool. You can zoom in and out. Uh, you can, uh, zoom into recreational resources to find them in your area, not just in Pottstown, but for the entire region. So one of the, um, features in the Pottstown Zoom In is that, uh, it lists all the location for our historical markers, um, for our trails and other, uh, points of interest within the downtown and also, uh, borough-wide. So check it out on P-A-R-R-C dot net. And then just a, a plug for them, they are having, on Sunday, October twentieth, a Put For Parks fundraiser, starting at ten-thirty AM. This will be at Manitowny Green Miniature Golf Course, seventy-one West High Street. And this is for the Park Foundation's First Annual, um, Put For Parks Mini Golf Tournament. It's fifteen dollars per person. Um, there's a link, um, through, uh, park.net where you can register, uh, your groups and fill out the appropriate forms. So check that out when you, when you have a chance. Um, also, I just wanted to mention that, um, not on the agenda, uh, we did have a recent request from Montgomery County Democrats. Uh, they're requesting use of the parking lot number five, which is behind the Auto Zone. The back half of that parking lot, uh, for early voting, community slash community block party event. It'll be a family-friendly day with free food, live music, and activities. Um, and there will be information on early voting. And, um, it's open to anyone regardless of their party affiliation. Um, so we'll be putting that on council's desks, uh, for potential approval on Tuesday night, which, again, just to remind everyone, uh, Monday is a holiday, so our regular council meeting will be held on Tuesday night. And, um, lastly, I did just wanted to follow up on council discussions last month regarding the Ricketts Community Center. Um, from both a staff and, uh, community service perspective, Boyertown Multi-Service has done an outstanding job managing the Ricketts Community Center. Um, they've consistently met and exceeded our expectations as a staff, um, providing not only the services we've requested, but also fostering meaningful partnerships for programming with local individuals and local groups from Pottstown that are running the programs there. And we believe what truly matters is not which entity runs the center, but that the efforts are rooted in and serve the needs of the community. And unfortunately, it seems there is an attempt to create a controversy around the center's operation, where quite frankly, none exists. Uh, and this is unproductive, uh, to the dialogue, and it risks alienating the operator and undermining the center's successful operation. And of course, some of you remember, this is something we're very familiar with, and we've seen this happen in the past, and it's a situation that we strongly recommend avoiding. Staff feels that we have a great organization operating the center. They're highly invested in the community. Um, and instead of discussions at public meetings to replace them, which quite frankly undermines the trust and relationship we've worked so hard to build between our organizations, the event individuals calling for this should have direct conversations with Boyertown Multi-Service to see how the operator can facilitate future changes the community might desire. Again, I want to be abundantly clear on this. If there's a request for how BMS should operate the center, the issue should be first be vetted at the Ricketts Committee, and BMS should be given the fair opportunity to address the operational need before looking for another operator. In fact, the Ricketts Committee that was set up four years ago holds regular meetings as a venue for these types of constructive dialogue. Therefore, in closing, staff is recommending the renewal of a five-year lease with BMS that will allow us to explore community-based operational improvements that can be implemented in partnership with the current operator, who is a trusted partner, rather than risking disruption with an unproven entity. This approach ensures operational stability, continued dialogue, and a venue for, uh, responding to the community's best interests. We also note that if there's a separate motion, um, request to discussions on the fu, future operations of the Ricketts Center, that this motion may not be necessary as there's already a provision in the lease requiring BMS to establish and hold regular meetings with the Ricketts Center Committee, where ideas for operational changes can be discussed directly with BMS and brought to staff and council for further consideration.
And so, uh, Dan, just to follow up on what Justin said. So council's aware, we would propose on Tuesday's agenda, two separate motions. Uh, one would be to, uh, approve and authorize the execution of an extension to the lease agreement with Boyertown Multi-Service. The second motion, uh, to address the concerns raised by Counselor Kirkland last month, would be to authorize staff to begin talking about, uh, possible, uh, acceptance or changes to the operation of the center at some point in the future. So we're not trying to ignore the request of Counsel Kirkland or council, but we think we can go forward in both these ways to continue the operation and plan for the future at the same time. So you'll see two, two separate motions on the agenda to that effect.
Okay.
That concludes my report. Thank you, everyone.
All right. And, uh, for 2025, what does our budget look like?
All right.
Now, this is just the start.
Let me move over to the others, the hot seat.
All right.
All right. All right, good evening, everyone. And, um, thank you for entertaining our 2025 budget presentation. I, with me here tonight, um, Marlee Boone, our finance director. And, um, we're, tonight, we're going to give you a broader view of where we're at thus far in the budget process. Just a reminder that, um, as Council President Ween said, we are very early on, uh, in, in the process. Um, and as Solicitor Garner had indicated, there are several steps that we need to go through to get this to, to final approval before, um, the end of the, the year. So we're not asking for any action on this tonight. Um, this will be something for you guys to digest. We'll give you the overview and a summary following the meeting. We'll send council a more detailed version of the budget so that they can, uh, look at it, uh, line by line. Um, and then we'll follow up in, uh, November, uh, with hopefully a little bit better, um, numbers and incorporating any, um, requested, um, suggestions or changes that we hear from all of you. So, um... Uh, this isn't working. Okay. All right, so where we're at right now, um, we sit with a current overall deficit of five-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars. Um, this would, uh, indicate a tax increase of four-point-nine-seven, uh, percent. You can see the associated millage there, um, for the average annual tax bill for a property assessed at a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, this would equate to seventy-two, sixty-three, and, um, additional, um, payment from the taxpayer. The main cost drivers that are contributing to the budget next year are, um, mainly related to contractual wage increases, our minimum, obli, minimum municipal obligation funding, which is tied to our pension. That is the amount that the actuaries tell us that we have to put into the pension, um, to keep it, uh, solvent. And also, uh, maintaining our, uh, short and long-term, uh, capital savings plan and our, um, other post-employment, um, benefits, uh, funding that we're obligated to. High-level highlights here, um, tax assessments, uh, you'll see in the chart later that we are, uh, definitely stabilizing, uh, even increasing a bit, uh, this year. Two-point-eight million in overall assessed value. How it's, however, it's important to keep in mind that with a seven-hundred-and-sixty-one-million-dollar, um, assessment, that will only raise revenue about forty thousand dollars. So two-point-eight million, you get about forty thousand. Um, so still, uh, a long way to go there. Um, for the wages, which are a bigger driver, um, our, the ASME wages are contracted at three-point-five percent, management at four percent, um, and the police contract is still, um, being finalized. MMO expenses for the pension plans are three-point-one, um, million combined. We've got two pensions, police and non-uniform, um, for an overall, uh, increase of four-hundred-and-forty-one, or four-hundred-and-forty-five thousand. Um, if you recall, earlier this year, we elected the smoothing, um, method with the pension funds. And, um, this actually resulted in saving the borough about, um, one million dollars in increased MMO expenses. So that, you know, five-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit number would have been one-point-five mil, closer to one-point-five million or somewhere in there, had we not gone through the, um, smoothing. The four-oh-one-A contribution, which I think we started in, um, twenty, uh, twenty, uh, this was when the, uh, contract was negotiated to remove the Borough's requirement to provide a pension. In lieu, we provide a four-oh-one-A, which is a defined contribution instead of a divine benefit to reduce the Borough's long-term, um, liability and exposure. Those expenses continue to go up, but in the long term, they're going to be a savings because we're going to have less people in the pension. Um, we've increased some of our, uh, budget expansion, expenses. The notable ones here are technology, um, contract expenses. We're looking at enhancing, um, efficiency and delivering, uh, improved customer experiences. Also, due to the pause on the Business Improvement District, we're recommending a twenty-thousand-dollar additional contribution to Pottstown Area Economic Development. Um, they have, uh, gone through some financial struggles lately because the bid, um, did not go through, um, which did result in reducing hours of, um, some employees. So, um, in order to, um, address that going forward, A, the bid really needs to get, uh, passed, and B, the participating, um, entities need to contribute more money, um, to help keep things going the way we need to go with economic development. So, uh, asking for that. Also, we're, we've increased property maintenance expenses by sixty-five thousand. And this is because, uh, we'd like to get a little bit more, uh, aggressive with the demolition of blighted properties that are, um, a nuisance to the, uh, community. Um, some of that also has to do with, um, issues with encampments and, um, some of the cleanups and other, um, issues that are involved there. Um, we also want to increase the legal expenses for more aggressive action towards, um, properties with severe or, and habitual, uh, code violations. Um, so instead of going down to the district justice, where oftentimes, uh, people are given more... where oftentimes people are given more time, we would like to take more problem properties to the county for possible equitable action. Major capital purchases, we've got two police patrol vehicles for next year. The records in CRU offices need to be renovated at this point. They're over, you know, 25 years old to update the workspaces. And they'll be funded 50% through the general fund and 50% through an arrangement that we have with DEA for reimbursement for our officers helping out the DEA. Similarly, renovations are needed in the Licensing and Inspections Department, and mainly because of the age, but mainly because we expect that there's going to be some future growth in headcount in that department to meet the demand that we have. We do have three new hybrid vehicles. This will be the first hybrid vehicles that the borough will have in its fleet. And we'll be cycling some of the current vehicles down to other departments and then getting rid of some of the older vehicles or vehicles that are no longer useful to us. So at this point, I will turn it over to Marley.
Thank you. As Justin mentioned, you can see the history of our assessments from 2005 through current projected 2025. We have noticed that the assessments have stabilized in the past three or four years.
And just to note that this represents the assessed value. It doesn't necessarily represent real estate value. I mean, we all know that real estate value in the borough has gone up a lot more than what it's showing on that chart. But the assessed value is different because there are ratios that are determined by the state or the county. Also, there are nonprofits that factor into that too, such as Tower Health, when they went tax exempt status. Obviously, that comes off of our list. So just to add a little more detail there.
This chart, we show this every year. It just represents the portion of each entity of real estate taxes. As you can see, the school district does hold the most with 68%. The borough at 24, and the county at 8. So it does list for a property assessed at $100,000 what your average tax bill would be for each entity. In 2025, there will be 242 tax-exempt parcels, five additional from 2024. And that lost tax revenue equals $2.4 million.
Correct.
Correct.
All right. So some other trends informing the 2025 budget. Local enabling taxes continue to rise since 2020 with an average growth of 9% per year. This has, the growth in that section of line items has moderated, with the exception of the earned income tax revenue, which continues to increase at 5%. Am I taking this one?
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. What we're seeing is the volume of property sales has decreased. So this is definitely a trend we want to keep an eye on because we get a substantial portion of our revenue from real estate transfer tax. However, due to the elevated sales prices, it's somewhat remained consistent with prior years in terms of the revenue that we're bringing in. But we still remain conservative and cautious about the future of the real estate market. We have the 2023 Housing Report number in there. The 2024 number isn't out, so we'll update that once we get the new number. Comcast Cable still projecting losses on that revenue as people switch over to internet-provided streaming services. The statute allows for us to collect franchise revenue for cable, not internet. So that's, there's really no argument to make there for trying to get revenue from the internet. Public safety revenue, rental inspection, building permits, they continue to increase, but we continue to budget them moderately because, you know, we really don't know what the economy is going to bring next year. But we try to base it on a three-year average. And then we also remove some of the larger projects, you know, the one-time or once-in-10-years-type projects from those calculations when putting together our revenue for public safety. For our delinquent, or Act 90, Passed Your Real Estate and Utility Bill, we, on average, collect 230 delinquent each year for that line item. One of the things that is helping us in the high-interest rate environment is our earnings off of CDs and our savings accounts. So they have increased through strategic investment with our reserves in those accounts.
So the next few slides will walk you through in more detail several funds, beginning with the general fund. It is a $17.2 million budget. The deficit is what we reported overall, 581,000. And this does include a $300,000 reserve transfer to help offset that deficit. Justin touched on the major purchases within the general fund, the two police vehicles, renovations for the police department, licensing and inspections renovations. We are maintaining our capital savings contributions and OPEB funding. And as he just said, those, we invest funds into CDs and high-interest savings accounts to try to offset the deficit each year.
Yes, so pretty much the interest that we're earning off of the investments is, pretty much equates to the amount that we would transfer from reserves.
The projected estimated estimate for 2025 is the 761 million. This amounts to about 7.7 million in general fund tax revenue. And then below is just a direct correlation between the tax revenue for the general fund and the millage increase each year. We are maintaining funding to the capital savings plan for the general fund. We do contribute $100,000 each year. For 2025, we have total expenditures in the amount of 876,000. As Justin talked about, those do include the two hybrid vehicles. Some, you can read through the list, but we are planning on doing the airport hangar roof replacement. There's grant matches, as well as some other projects. And then future projects also include upgrades to the police and borough fleets. And then we have long-term capital projects that will come at a future date. For the Parks Fund, the budget is just over 1 million. There's a zero-dollar deficit, so no tax increase is needed. However, we do want to report on the active projects, additional parking in Memorial Park, replacement of equipment, and efficiency upgrades for Mini Golf security cameras. The Parks Fund also is, continue to maintain their capital savings contribution in the amount of $48,000. And then their capital savings project expenditures total $95,000 for enhancements to Brookside Park and Pollock Park. Future projects include BMX parking lot and Maple Street Park and Walnut Street Park upgrades. The trash budget for 2025 is 3.8 million. There is, however, a deficit of 177,000. That deficit is covered by reserves. And therefore, we will be proposing a 12% increase to the trash rates for 2025. This is equal to about $46 annually, or $11.45 quarterly. And this will help reduce the need to draw from reserves for the deficit. Just as aside, I did compare other municipality trash rates and private haulers. And we are compared, this would be comparable for trash and recycle. Just as a reminder, we also include one bulk item pickup free of charge per week. The fire budget is 2 million, just above 2 million for 2025 with a zero-dollar deficit. The budget is balanced, and therefore, there will be no increase needed. And then just to touch on some of their expenditures for their capital savings plan in the amount of $40,000, 10,000 for equipment upgrades, facility upgrades, and equipment for the open inspector and administrative positions. The debt service fund, the budget is 265,000. There is a zero-dollar deficit. This is for the bond for the Borough Garage that will expire in 2028. The highest payments did occur in 2023, and they will continue to decline over the life of the bond. Just to note, the finance team is looking into bond deficents over the next coming year, which would relieve the borough of that debt.
Yeah, so the way that that works, for people that don't know, the authority just went through bond deficents as well. So if you have the funds in your account, you can essentially put them into a higher yield, like a CD, which allows you to match the interest rate that you're being charged on the debt. So essentially, you're just paying the base, if you think of it as like a mortgage, you know, you're just paying the principal, and you're not paying any interest with a deficence model. But you do tie that amount of money up for a period of years, in this case until 2028. All right, so if you look at, over the years, we kind of, we're in a pattern going back to 2005 where we've had some 0% tax increases. And then, of course, 2007, which was actually before the financial crisis, we had to raise rates 26%. We saw a similar pattern in 2013 through 2017, where tax rates were kept pretty much near zero. And then in 18, we had a 12%, and then in 19, we had 9%. Since then, we've been able to pretty much keep the tax increases to as bare minimal as possible, but not really too much higher or lower than the rate of inflation. And so this is the course that we would recommend to prevent big spikes in future years for taxes. So this just gives you a summary of all the funds, showing our deficit there, which would require a 4.97 tax increase or 72.63 annual for properties assessed at $100,000. So again, we're open to taking your questions, thoughts tonight, or if you'd like to look over the budget in more detail once we send it to you. We would ask for any comments prior to our next meeting in November.
Well, thank you. And then, actually, I do support the increased budget expenses for dealing with problem properties and everything of that nature.
Anyone? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is our civil service list promotions. Chief?
Hi, everyone. We currently have several positions open in the police department, specifically a sergeant's position and two corporal's positions. So I would be looking for your approval to promote from our current civil service lists to fill those positions. They are current positions, they're not new positions, we would just be filling them.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Agreement with Montgomery County Community College, Mr. Garner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Attached to your agenda are three separate agreements. They all relate to the community college's receipt of RCAP grant funds for renovation of their building at 95 South Hanover Street. That's an internal renovation of that building. Of the three agreements, the borough is a party only to one, and that's the cooperation agreement. This is a requirement for them to receive the grant funds. That agreement would essentially require the borough to first approve the project, which is simply the building renovation, and also potentially guarantee expenses if they were improperly spent. Obviously, we are not involved in the project, and I objected vehemently to that provision of the agreement. So we've come to an agreement with the community college that we would enter into a separate agreement with the college, who would indemnify us. And in the event there were funds that were improperly or ineligible for the grant, that if either the RDA or the Commonwealth looked to the borough, the college would agree to essentially reimburse us for any funding. Highly unlikely that would occur, but with the separate agreement with the community college, I am satisfied that the borough would be protected. So for Tuesday night, there'd be a motion listed to approve this agreement subject to the execution of an indemnification agreement between the borough and the community college. The form of that indemnification would have to be satisfactory to Justin and myself. So a lot of talk about nothing here, but these agreements are required for the college to get their, I think it's 1.5 million in grant funding for this project. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
There are none, we'll listen for Monday evening. Okay, 14 is Pico Green Region Grant Application.
Yes, thank you, everyone. So this application will be for Riverfront Park, where we had to remove some ash trees due to the disease that's been plaguing that species. So we are looking for money from Pico. And there is a $10,000 match that Parks and Recreation has budgeted for.
Okay. And we need any action on that?
Yes, we would need a resolution for Monday night.
Okay.
Or Tuesday night, Tuesday night, sorry.
Yep. How about the local share for the fire truck?
This will be a grant to replace the fire truck that had an electrical fire earlier this year. So we are asking for $600,000. There isn't a match that's required to this, but there would be $400,000 through the insurance settlement that we could actually show as a match, which should help our chances to get that grant. And that would come from the Goodwill Fire Company. So we would ask for a resolution for this on Tuesday night.
Okay, list that. We're next. Oh, 233 Shoemaker Road, Mr. Garner.
Walmart? Yes, thank you. This is a minor land development plan that Walmart submitted to the Borough. It's a, I guess a minor change, but it's four thousand square feet of building addition that would be on the east side of, of the building. Due to the expansion of the building itself, there'd be some uh, reconfiguration of parking and stormwater um, that have to be addressed. The Planning Commission discussed it at the recent meeting. The applicant engineer indicated that they could comply with all of our engineers' comments. Uh, however, there's not been a revised plan submitted uh, just yet to guarantee that they can do that. Um, there is time left for the Borough to act until the November meeting. So uh, I'm going to recommend, and I talked to Justin today, that uh, we'll defer any action on this till November. Uh, by that time, we should have a revised plan and we should be in position to approve the minor land development. Dan, if there's anything you can add from the Planning Commission, it, it really isn't a, a great deal of change, but it is enough to require land development.
Right, uh, no, there, there's not much to what it is they're doing, but we want all the i's dotted and the t's crossed. So putting it off is not, not a bad idea. Okay, then uh, what do we have next? Thirty-three.
Two fifteen.
Oh, zoning, uh, two thirteen High, nope.
No, I, I think you.
Oh, I missed one, two fifteen Washington, go ahead Chuck.
Yeah, so, so council remembers this, this is the former Potstown Plating Work Building. Um, the, the new owner has moved into the building and, and is undertaking operations. In the meantime, staff has been working with the applicant to try to address the final issues involving the land development component of this project. And um, over the past few months, uh, we've been talking about the waivers that were requested by the applicant from Sado and I think you have in your packet a May twenty-third letter that lists the number of waiver requests. Uh, through Justin's effort, um, I think that staff is willing to recommend that council support and grant the waivers that are outlined in the May twenty-third letter with the imposition of several conditions uh, on the applicant. And in speaking with the applicant and their attorney, I think they're amenable to those conditions. One of the concerns was the creation of a sidewalk or connection to the trail, Schuylkill River Trail. Um, the applicant um, is having problems doing it on their property, on their side of Washington Street due to the layout of their parking lot. So the first condition would be that the applicant would install stretch of four-foot-wide missing sidewalk on the east side of Washington Street uh, between Industrial Highway and Laurel Street. Submit a plan with those, with the sidewalk as well as the crossing ramps and line striping that would be required uh, to meet ADA requirements. The second uh, condition we would suggest would uh, be the contribution of a fee in lieu of trees in the amount of eight thousand dollars. Uh, there are not, um, the plan does not show sufficient trees and through negotiation, we believe eight thousand dollar fee in lieu of trees is a fair amount. And the final uh, condition would be uh, the requirement to enhance the landscaping being closed along the fence line. Uh, it would be a total of fifty shrubs. Uh, ten of the shrubs would be a certain variety of cherry, laurel, evergreen, uh, which again will serve as a nice landscaping buffer in lieu of some of the trees. So uh, we're, we'll be prepared to have a motion on the agenda to grant the waivers subject to imposition of those conditions. Um, if you have questions tonight or Tuesday night, we're happy to answer them and um, it'll be happy to get this project finalized and get the work done so we can move forward.
Very good. Any questions?
Not tonight.
Alright, we'll list that for Tuesday. Uh, now, two fifteen South. Zoning application for two thirteen.
Um, yeah, thank you, Dan. We, the Borough received a zoning application uh, regarding uh, two thirteen, I'm sorry, yeah, two thirteen High Street. Um, its uh, request has nothing to do with the use, because the uses are permitted currently, commercial use and residential uses. Uh, Mr. Mike Murk here this evening, he's representing the applicant and um, he'll give you an overview of, of the relief that's being sought before the zoning hearing board. Mike?
I'm here. Good evening. Uh, Chuck Gade, a good summary of uh, what we're looking for. Uh, this is two thirteen East High Street, I believe it's referred to as the Brownstone uh, Building. This was recently acquired by Elastic Acquisitions, the same group that's uh, redoing and redeveloping the, the old elastic buildings on High Street. They recently acquired four additional properties from a uh, a former investor in the Borough of Potstown. Their goal is to create similar units to what they're doing in the uh, the elastic buildings. Uh, this building has already existing, it's an existing building, so it, you know, they're working within the confines of the existing building. Uh, there are already two existing legal uh, non-conforming units in there with um, with uh, square footage of four hundred and sixty square feet and that's unit two oh one on the second floor and existing, uh, unit three oh two is four hundred and fifty-seven square feet on the third floor. Uh, their goal, based on the layout, is, is to have a total of ten residential units on the second, the fir- fourth floor. They're working within the confines of the existing hallways and the way everything lays out in there. Uh, their goal is to provide uh, market rate uh, uh, units in here to continue with the vision of bringing um, residents downtown who will spend disposable income with these smaller units. They would be affordable because they're smaller, not because they're uh, Section Eight or any kind of uh, low-income units. Uh, but to bring in uh, young professionals or such into those units. These units are already within the building. It seems that the prior owner didn't wish to move forward uh, units, but they were used as commercial units. Uh, my understanding was there was a um, a recording studio in there one time and some other things. But the way this building's broken up, it's kind of odd that the ground floor, the ground floor was uh, commercial and it's proposed to remain commercial. Uh, the second floor had one non-conforming residential unit and three commercial units. Uh, the third floor um, is going, is already three residential units. And then the fourth floor was commercial, is now going to be three residential units. All the units on the fourth floor, uh, based on the layout, will conform. So it's really just two additional units on the second floor uh, that will have a square footage of five hundred and ninety-seven square feet and four hundred and eighty-seven square feet. They'll, they'll be uh, you know, have kitchens, bathrooms, bedrooms. But again, you know, based on the layouts and hallways and such, uh, they, they want to utilize the existing layout and not have to uh, uh, I guess reconfigure more within that floor and just convert those former commercial units into residential units. Thank you.
And how do they get the extra? Are, are they putting walls in?
What's that?
Do they put walls in to get extra apartments or extra units?
No, my understanding, these units are already there. They were like, they were commercial units on the fourth floor. They're converting the three commercial units into residential units. Uh, they fully comply. The third floor is already three existing residential units, nothing is changing there. Uh, the second floor currently has two undersized, or actually one existing legal non-conforming residential unit and then two undersized commercial units that they now want to convert to residential. They're the ones we're talking about.
Do we, do we have a minimum square footage?
Yeah, the minimum square footage is eight hundred square feet, that's why we're requesting.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So, and then, they're already laid out in there. It isn't like they're taking an open space and saying, hey, we want to create undersized units. Those undersized units are already there.
Right, so four hundred, it's like twenty by twenty.
Mike, the wall, every, as on those drawings that you have, unit two one two, that's what it exactly currently looks like right now?
That is my understanding.
Okay. Hell, I'd blow out the walls to make a giant opened uh, area and not worry about having two little tiny bedrooms and a little tiny kitchen just open it up.
I think, I think the issue is there's already two small units in there, so not to make them seem out of place. And apparently, they're on the rear side of the building, on the second and third floors. They really, and the only way you can access those units is from the rear stairwell of that building. I think it's instead of just having two uh, two, what's it called? Uh, not, uh, two strange units there, adding two more makes it more of a, you know, seems more inconformant to what's already there.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the inside of it, what the floor plan's going to look like.
And there are going to be several, several large units over, you know, we got one, it's um.
Eleven hundred.
Yeah, eleven hundred, one it's a thousand sixty-four and then proposing two that are in the, in the nine hundreds and then one it's eight sixty-seven, so, so it.
It's the little ones, you can make them look cool.
Wha- what are the uh, the square footage, the existing smaller units on the, on the second floor? I think the one that you're comparing the new ones to?
So, they're, they're, they're already that size, they just are commercial.
So they're.
We're converting them to residential.
Four, five hundred square feet, is it?
Uh, so, I'll go through the second floor. The second floor, there's an existing residential, legal non-conforming residential unit of four hundred and sixty square feet. There's an existing commercial unit that's five hundred and ninety-seven square feet, a existing commercial unit that's four hundred and eighty-seven square feet and a commercial unit that's eight hundred square feet. So those commercial units, they're really just requesting to convert them to residential use without having to knock down walls and such. Like I said, we're not, hey, we'd love, we'd love the Borough's support, we understand their concern, we, we just hope you don't oppose it.
Okay.
Can we come see inside the building?
I don't see why not.
Good idea.
I'd, I'd like to see how small they, like what it feels like in one of those small rooms.
Yeah, well, uh, then we'll set up, we'll have the uh, the owner of the building set up something with Justin.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah, if you have it broken up into little apartments, like a little kitchen, a little bathroom.
Yeah.
It's going to look really, really miniscule, that's why I'm saying.
It's going to be like a tiny house.
Okay, what?
Like a tiny house. I have a tiny house and that's tiny. So yeah, I'd like to see it if we could.
When you get more occupants, you have more occupants now than, rather than blowing out the wall, right?
What's that?
You have more occupants available, able to use the premises as it is now.
Correct.
We don't want to put them in cages, though.
They're commercial, they're commercial.
Right.
And that, and for what they're doing there, that's the only zoning relief they're asking is to have the two, two additional undersized units.
Okay. Take a look.
Yeah, I just want to peek.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, nineteen, street closure. Who's trick or treat party?
Yes, um, so we've got a October thirty-first, five to nine. Uh, this will be North Franklin from Wilson to uh, Diamond and we have the. Who's, who's party is that, who's requesting that? Okay, we, we'll have to get, Jeanette Friedman, yeah, yeah, we know her, yeah, but she's done it before, so.
Alright.
Okay, um.
List that one.
Yeah.
And Y W C A's block party.
Yeah, this will be their uh, block party from ten AM to four PM, October twenty-sixth and twenty-fifth.
We'll list that for my day. And Funky Santa, five K, Parks and Rec got it.
This will be College Drive at Hanover Street and College Drive and Keystone Boulevard.
Okay, we can list that one. And Hopearts Run, Air Street.
Again, this one's a College Drive from Hanover to High Street.
Okay. We have uh, Harb approvals, A through G, and then administrative approvals, A through J. Put those on. Upcoming board vacancies, Human Relations Commission, we need one four-year term to expire October eleventh. And there's a request for reappointment by Counselor Benny. Okay. And also, Kayla Ashcraft, you sent a letter of intent. That we'll vote on that Monday night, Tuesday night. Human Relations Commission, a four-year term to expire November eleventh, twenty twenty-four, no applicant. And for Harb, one five-year term to expire April one, twenty twenty-seven, no applicant. And uh, now to hear from the citizens that are present.
Yep, first up is uh, Tom Hilton, please.
Thank you, I'm here uh, to speak to you as a fifty-one-year resident, homeowner in downtown Potstown. And uh, because I've been here so long, I do know pretty much history. And since the subject of the Ricket Center came up, plus Parks and Recreation came up, I thought, in case you don't know, I would provide a little background information. So the Potstown Library, as you know, is located at High and Washington Streets, but it was the Potstown Post Office until nineteen sixty-two. Then the Post Office built a new building at High and Madison Streets where they are now. The Potstown Library, which was in a mansion on High Street, they asked the government, can we get the Post Office building? And the government said, yes, we'll give it to you, but we need a guarantee from the government that you're going to support the library, we don't want to give it to you, and then the library goes belly up. So, at that time, both the Borough and the School District were contributing to the library and they were both also contributing to the Parks and Recreation Commission. So in nineteen sixty-three, there was a three-hour joint meeting of council and the school board and they agreed, the school board would run Parks and Rec and fund it and the Borough would fund the library. And they did that and, and included the Ricket Center, Parks and Recs included the Ricket Center. So they did that until nineteen ninety, twenty-eight years. And then the school board unilaterally said, you know what, we don't want to fund it anymore. So you fund it Borough, and if you don't fund it, there just won't be a recreation apartment. So the Borough agreed to fund it. Now, the school district was still running Parks and Rec, they were still running the Ricket Center, they were just building the Borough. The Parks and Rec office was, oldest time was in the School District Administration Building and stayed there. And then in two thousand four, two thousand five, that's when the school district said, we're getting out of the business altogether, we're not even going to run it, you run it. And they moved, or rather, they evicted uh, Parks and Rec from the School District Administration Building here to Borough Hall. So that is when the nonprofit Collaborative Board first was running Rickets and that didn't work out and then it was Oliver Boys and Girls Club and then, and now it's Boyer Town Multi-Service. Meanwhile, the Borough, and as you know, Parks and Rec is a million dollars a year, the library's two hundred and twelve thousand. Meanwhile, the Borough has continued to fund the library all this time. So, as a citizen looking back, I can point out that there has been a very significant development with school funding in the last couple of years, which is, which many of you know and have lobbied for, fair funding from the state. And the state is now implementing fair funding and money is really. And the state is now implementing fair funding, and money is really starting to come in substantial quantities to the school district. So in the last five years, our state subsidy, I say our, the school district's state subsidy has increased sixty percent. And the school district's end-of-the-year fund balance this year is projected to be twenty-six million dollars, which is twice what it was five years ago. Now, I just believe that the borough manager has suggested you're going to raise taxes about five percent, and you've raised taxes every year for the last five years at least. The school district has not raised taxes in five years, and I'd be surprised if they raise taxes next year. Of course, there's also a twelve percent trash fee, I see that's, that's going to be increased. So last month, when Counselor Kirkland said, we should come up with a long-term plan for the Ricketts Center, what to do with it, my thoughts are this. Council and the school board have met many times, ten times in the last ten years, but they haven't met in the last three years. And given the situation, because the library could be considered an educational institution, and today, every Potstown student can get materials out of the library using their student ID. They don't even need a library card, just show their student ID, no fines. If you don't bring your stuff back, you can't get anything more out, but they're not going to be fined. So it might be if council and the school board, not my decision to make, decide to have a joint meeting, this might be a good topic of conversation about who would be best qualified, who has the best resources to take care of the services to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Okay, how about counselors? Got anything to say? Counselor Proskel?
Again, I appreciate, you know, Doug's service, and a lot of my neighbors on Walnut Street, and I really appreciate him too, because they finally repaid Walton, and I think the last time it was repaved is probably his first year at the borough, but.
Mr. Benny?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Vice President Lebrinsky.
Counselor Lindsay. Did you say nothing?
No, I know, no, I'm gonna say a little something today, so. I'm gonna chime in on Ryan. I went to Doug's fiftieth anniversary, it was really nice, they had it earlier today. And I told Doug, I said, I never known anybody that worked like fifty years, and I know, like, was in service for fifty years. I was like, that was, that was awesome. I know I won't make it acceptable for fifty years, there's no way. But anyway, I went to National, when, National Night Out, and the playground that Parks and Rec did for Chestnut Playground, it was packed. I had never seen, I didn't, I don't know if the kids were playing on there, they were just, it was so many kids on that playground, and it was beautiful. They enjoyed that playground, they appreciated that playground, so it was really nice to see the playground, it was good, it was perfect timing, and the playground was up and running during, during the National Night Out, so I liked it, that was nice. That's it for me.
Counselor Minostra?
Nothing.
No, about the cleanup, would you? Okay, delivered it.
Nothing.
Oh, she did, oh, she took your thunder.
Well, I think I can go along. I can go along with that. I have nothing more to add, so meeting adjourned.